Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge.
Pledge, all you ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome to the work session of Monday, April 4th, 2022, 9:30 a.m. With the Secretary Treasurer, call the roll, please.
President Scott Haworth.
Here.
William Pell, Treasurer, here. Edward Warner, Jr.
President.
Ann Walker.
Here.
William Parrish.
Present.
We have everyone's here.
Thank you, trustee Pell. Thank you. All right, let's get started. We've got a lot of work to do today. I see that we have some determinations of waterfowl hunting locations that have to be gone over.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, you can.
That we do them at the latter part of the meeting?
We could absolutely.
With the general permit?
Absolutely, we could do that.
Consultants and some of the people in here.
Absolutely. All right, so let's table that till the latter part. Okay, I have the Art III Trust under the La Canne Family Trust, 35 Walker Avenue, East Quogue. Is anybody here representing that application? Land use? They coming in, James? Okay, so DK Arshores, we're going to hold DK Arshores. We're going to hold number three, Shinnecock Road, Denazi. Right, we're holding that.
So hold Maggio and Denazi.
We're going to hold, yes, we're going to hold those two. And next up, we're going to have JMO, Environmental Consulting, 12 Shinnecock Road, Village Quogue.
Morning, Glenn.
All right, so you have an application before us, right? You want to raise a 45-foot of bulkhead by 12 inches. You want to match the height of the adjacent bulkhead backfiller structure, approximately 10 cubic yards of clean sand to be trucked in from and upland source and to reconstruct in kind and in place, six by six by 45 timber decked. I guess I was supposed to say no treated wood, right?
Pardon?
Go back. No treated wood to be used, right?
Oh, yeah.
You got two treated woods? Yeah, there's a big difference. You've got a big difference going on there, Glenn. Right? So we're going to have to, we'll have to.
We'll fix that.
Fix that.
Little whiteout required.
Down and white out.
Little whiteout. All right, go ahead. Go ahead with your project.
Well, this was about 25 years ago. This was a bulkhead on one, I guess it's in the north, I call it. All done at one time, Richie Michter. I don't recognize the name, but he built that bulkhead years ago. I did the approvals. And a couple of months ago, the neighborhood to the north came in and they just reconstructed their bulkhead, made it 12 inches higher, and included a return. There had been no return because there'd been one, you know, fluid structure. And it was just causing a little bit of water's coming over. You can see the.
Right, so I see. I got your pictures here. Here's pictures. You can see exactly what's going on. So you want to make it all match? You want it all?
Yeah, you're looking north there. That's a new bulkhead north there, a little bit higher, just to match the height. And they're going to just bring in one, I guess a string or put it in, put a dead man on it.
Right, because when they were initially set, the heights were, you know, sea level rises change, so you want to stop that. You just want to keep it.
Yep. Nothing going on along, nothing going off of.
Right.
That's an old bulkhead.
Yeah. He's fine with it? Mr. Parrish?
It's fine.
Fine with it? Mr. Warner?
It's a simple replacement.
Simple replacement.
Are we going to leave the entire walkway?
They want to redo that 45-foot walkway right there.
With non-treated material.
Correct.
You're removing the treated material.
Yes.
Pardon?
You're going to remove the treated material that's presently there and put it with compliant materials per Blue Book.
Right. I'm fine with it. It meets the Blue Book, so it's fine. You're in the Village Quogue.
Correct.
Good with it? Ann? Mark? Good?
Just got to clean that one typo up.
Yeah, you got to clean your typo up. Can you do that?
I'll take care of that.
No treated material.
You got it in there quick today.
I don't know, I got it a little.
This is kind of.
At least I'm not going to be last today.
Actually, you got another one?
Yeah.
Let's do, while you're here, let's do it.
Let me get my file, please.
Going with you, Phil?
Yeah, one of me.
What's that? Yeah, I'll do it. The plans are okay, right? Yeah.
This is Martin Reed. He's the surveyor. Did the plans for this next one.
What's the address of this one?
2299 North Sea Road.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This is Beverly Property Management. Address is 2299 North Sea Road. They want to apply to propose a, construct a four-by-eight ramp to a four-by, four-foot wide, 175 feet long fixed dock utilizing through float decking with a three-by-14 ramp to a six-by-20 chalk float.
In scallop pond.
Scallop pond.
Want to tell us all about it?
Well, there's no dock there now. There's a house that is currently, that's just about to start being reconstructed, as you'll see there, at the end of a footpath, and they just want to put in a dock for the house.
It's the original house to the Salms property.
Pardon?
It's the original house. It's the original house to the location of the property.
Is it Martin?
No, that house, that house was. No, the Salms property, the farm complex in the middle, if you go a little bit to the south, that whole area was, is original. It was a barn, dairy barns it was. Now it's all stables. There were a few houses there. And they built probably maybe around 2010 or so, 2008, they built a house that's near where they want the dock.
A boathouse? A boathouse kind of?
No, it's a cottage. It's a small house. It's maybe, it was a two-bedroom house. It's very small. And that's, that's actually considered.
Can you show us on the picture?
Yeah, further south.
You're right.
Now, yep.
That's the house that's going to be reconstructed right there.
And where's the dock going to go?
Right there?
Correct, yeah.
There's a duck line a little bit to the south of that.
And how, how long is the dock from the high tide mark? How far out is it? James? There's only 100-foot pierline in there.
It's going to be a little bit more than that.
All right, you have scale for that?
I don't. I thought I had the footage.
There's not, there's not much water on that flat.
Well, talking about the entire length would be 175.
From mean high water.
From the high water to the outer terminus of the dock.
100 and, about 170. Now that's where the 175-foot number is, from high water.
So from?
175.
From mean high water?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're 75 feet over.
175.
I think, was that four?
40, Scott, yeah. I mean, there are no dock structures in there. There's only a few other docks in scallop pond, correct.
Yeah, you have, they want to float more to the north.
Yes.
On that other cottage.
Yep.
It's not that far, Marty. It's 20 scale.
Oh, is it 20? So it's 40. No, it's 40 scale, Charlie.
What's that for here, Scott?
40.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And this is a separate parcel tip, right? Subdivided this one?
It was subdivided into. Into six lots total, so they had five building lots, and one lot was the remainder that surrounds every other lot.
The only reason I ask, you're allowed to have one dock per lot.
Yeah, this would actually be the second dock. The lot is, it's probably more than 300 acres itself, probably closer to 400 acres by itself.
This is, there's already a dock on this lot?
Yes.
Yeah, we, yeah. Per our rules, you're allowed one dock per residential lot.
You have a lot.
No, it's still part of it.
It's still part of it?
Yeah.
This is the lot? Yeah. And these are the separate lots here?
Yep.
So I mean.
This is where the dock, the other existing dock is.
It has two things going for it. It's too long and it's not going to be.
Yeah, I didn't know about, I didn't know about this second, second dock on one lot.
Yeah.
We could, where's a huge lot and it's two houses on it?
There's actually probably closer to residence-wise, there's at least three for the family, and there's some, a lot of worker housing too.
Okay, well, main dwellings.
Yeah, there's at least.
You can't count working dwellings.
Right, there's at least three for, that the family uses.
On that one lot?
On that one lot, yeah.
So as it is right now, it's not approvable?
Yeah. Let's come back. We have to, I mean. Hey, Mark, do we need to have a public hearing? Because the lot, this lot is so huge, and it's where there's three main dwellings on it.
Well, you're asking me if you're going to go against it?
If we let it have a second dock on it.
Yeah.
But we would need a public hearing to change.
I would definitely recommend.
We need a public hearing to change our Blue Book regulation first, and then a public, if that goes forward, we need a public hearing in order to adopt this.
That's the question I was going to ask. Have you ever given any kind of a variance based on that?
No, we held pretty much.
So never, never a variance for a two dock on one property that any of the trustees can recall?
No, I mean, we did do two docks in Cold Springs, but they had different property numbers, so they were two separate lots.
Same thing with Willie's Pond where we did, where the whole strip, the whole neighborhood had.
Yeah, but they had different tax, they were different lots. This is one individual lot.
It's going to have to be discussed.
Yeah, I think that this is.
That's what I'm trying to hear. And I'm trying to hear it out so they understand.
Right, we're going to have to.
Give me a few minutes.
So I agree. So the only other place I was thinking about was on the, off Cobb Road, off Cobb Lane, where there's an easement.
Yeah.
Across that large property.
Right, yeah. Also, we did on, where we did, where the people had an easement on your place in Hampton Bay's with the dock, they had the dock, and it was a long, it was stripped down.
Well, that, but that was a different lot, though. There were different, you know.
Different numbers.
Yeah.
The intention when they subdivided was to grant each residential lot an easement to scallop pond.
So they do have an easement?
I don't know if they ever, if they ever formally filed that, but that was.
They have an easement to the goat of the pond. They don't have an easement to build a dock.
Well, they wanted it for dock rights, and prior to the filing of the map, the town planners didn't like that, so I think they removed it. They're going to address a pay run to get the map filed.
Can you get the information from that subdivision?
Well, it's not, it's not on there.
Oh, so they're not on there.
They removed it in order to get the map filed, but that was, you know, that was their intention.
We're going to have to do more examination of this situation.
Yeah.
This is going to, we're going to have to hold this, obviously, and we're going to have to.
I'm going to do my homework, too.
Homework and see example, maybe you can, you know, further.
Yeah, I'll find out what's.
On the survey.
The other question would be, how many other docks are you hoping to put in there? Because that's another.
Well, they're not, they're not looking to, they're only asking for the one, you know.
At this point.
Yeah. I don't even know if they intend on building on the other lots. They're probably going to sterilize those lots and get the tax write-off at some point.
But there are other properties there?
Yeah, there's, there's four other, there's five, five separate building lots.
So you might be able to get an easement, you know, down to the water for those five lots.
Right.
And have a community dock.
Mm-hmm.
That sounds good.
More homework.
It's okay, keeps you out of trouble.
So now you need, you got whiteout for the one, more homework on the other.
Got to buy a gallon of the other way home.
I did see a bowl eagle when I went down there the other day.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
That's all you have for today, right?
Pardon?
That's all for today for you, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's get back to mine. Henry Klepacky at 27 Marlin Road, East Quogue for shoreline bulkheading. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sign in here?
Sign in there.
Okay.
Name for the record. Standard drill.
Okay, we have a rip-out replacement of existing bulkhead and replace with new bulkhead, two-foot return, two 10-foot returns, and they're going to remove the step-down box. They're going to increase the bulkhead elevation from 3.6, 3 feet, 0.6 inches to four to match the southerly neighbor, and they're going to install a 53-feet of capping. Rip-out, replace the boardwalk, eight foot by 42, and add a ramp, floating dock, and cantilever platform.
Six by 20.
Can we see the plans, please?
Oh, and the buffer will also be gravel, and they're going to be adding native plants on the area that's.
Yeah.
Where the boardwalk is.
We Blue Book compliant on this one, James?
Looks like it.
Morning, James.
Morning. Mr. Lark, is that a little bit more, James?
Yeah. So Shinnecock Shores, East Quogue, highly constrained area, also an area that's, you know, struggling to get everybody to maintain their bulkheads, as I discussed in prior meetings. Some of them are.
Really dilapidated.
Really dilapidated, and it creates a big problem for the other property owners and the neighbors, because, you know, the dredging is quite costly and it's quite a logistics issue. So we always try and work with the neighbors there to make sure they maintain the bulkheads, keep better water quality, and better navigation for everybody that lives there. So I know you guys are, have been working in there quite a bit.
Yes. Trying to get everything done for the association, as long as there are the bulkheads as well, so.
When you replace the decking, are you going to pitch it landward so it doesn't have the runoff coming?
Yes, oh, for the boardwalk?
For the boardwalk, yes. To reduce the runoff that comes from the rain and.
Mom?
Yes.
If you beat in the Blue Book, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's the same, it's like a cookie cutter application.
Right. And you're not, yeah, you're fine. I mean, I'm fine. This could advance as far as I'm concerned. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, trustees.
That's all you got today?
That's all I have today.
All right. Have a good day.
Thank you, you as well. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, James.
Next one that I have is Surfside Environmental, Mary Quatroche, 17 Hampton Harbor Road. You see, Daphne has just arrived. Perfect timing.
You guys reviewed this last work session. I got some questions about the treated lumber that was used to build the bulkhead.
I think we weren't sure.
I think she has some answers.
Okay.
I'm going to see if the wood underneath was treated.
Right, we didn't know.
Yep.
Supposed to do some testing. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello. Morley Quatroche, good morning.
Morning. How is everyone?
Good.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning. I'm here with Morley Quatroche this morning, the owner of the property. I do have something to submit for the record.
Good sign into, Daphne, when you get a moment.
Yes.
Morning, Daph.
Hi, Lisa.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well.
Wallis.
What else do you want here? Just the application? I'm not sure what other people wrote here.
Yeah, just put your name and.
Contact the.
Yeah.
Your email is perfect.
Okay, so just to refresh the board's memory, we are seeking to legalize an existing 20 by 20 at-grade deck landward of the bulkhead that was inherited by my clients upon the purchase of the property in 2017. The deck has been there from historical aerial since about 2014. It was reconstructed by the prior owner post Hurricane Sandy. I was tasked by you to get some further information. Literally, we went out and did a little bit of digging to see what we could figure out about the structural integrity of the deck. So I submitted some photographs and a statement about our findings. So as far as the deck is concerned, I know the board is concerned about treated wood. We did find that it's constructed with a two-inch by eight-inch treated wood frame. However, you can see in the photos that whatever's been exposed to soil doesn't have the discoloration any longer, so it's kind of like whatever has been in the soil, the treatment is no longer present, I guess you could say.
Did you say it bleached out?
It's been there for eight years, so, you know, it's been exposed to weather and moisture for all of that time.
Irrigation? And irrigation?
Well, I'm getting it. So the frame is tied, it's tied into the bulkhead on both sides at the edges. We also believe that it's tied in underground. That was based on a conversation with the prior owner that Mary Quatroche had. There's a three-inch by nine-inch timber that we believe goes across the entire structure at eight feet approximately, and that's one of the photos I have there, and also at 16 feet. So it's, it's braced with a pretty significant timber across the structure in at least two places that we found. The composite deck boards are screwed into the joists, and they're further fastened with deck clips. It's level and has been there for nearly eight years. It does not appear to have shifted or sunk over time, so that's suggesting that it has pretty sound structural support, which not, it's not really visible unless we totally excavate the whole thing, which is kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to do here. So that's what we found factually about the deck. As far as irrigation, there's two sprinkler heads on the most landward edge at 20 feet of the deck itself, and those are used to irrigate the lawn. Those are basically going into the lawn, they're not coming back toward the bulkhead. There's some drip line irrigation located within the garden beds along the bulkhead, and those are like wrapped around some of the larger grasses and the shrubs. What else? And there's two hose bibs in there that are near the bulkhead and the water access stairs. I've got photos of those as well. And those are mainly used for cleaning, you know, whatever recreational equipment they have down by the bulkhead. So that, that's the facts that we could come up with based upon what you had asked. We did look into testing the wood, but it's kind of evident when you look at my photos that there is the discoloration of a treated wood. But you can see in my photo number two specifically, the upper portion of the wood is what was exposed to air and has that discoloration of a treated wood. And then this part here is what's been submerged, and it does not have that.
Right. So based on your knowledge of the Blue Book regulations, what are you, what are you proposing? What do you think is appropriate remedy to, what are you asking?
We would like to maintain the structure as is, knowing that my client inherited it, that it's there, and there are these, you know, discrepancies with what you would have normally approved. It's structurally sound. To basically reconstruct it at this time would be a pretty big expense, and.
Did you look into that, though? Did you look into what it would cost to remove those top boards and, you know, replace that under carriage? Did you look into that cost?
It's my understanding with these, these special screws, just based on my discussions with contractors many years ago, that once you unscrew these things, you have to buy all new screws.
Okay.
And that's fairly expensive. I don't know.
You know what that is? Do you have any idea?
No, no idea.
It's like, I want to say 200 bucks for a box kind of thing, and a box is, you know, a little.
Okay.
So you'd probably need, I don't know, a dozen or so boxes.
That many boxes? How many's in a box, do we know?
I don't know, 150, something like that? I don't know, I'd have to look that up. But they're, I know they're expensive.
So. I, so you purchased this knowing that there was no, that there was no permit for this?
I didn't know that. So that's correct, but it was on the CFO.
It was?
Well.
When we put a pool in is when we learned that it was an illegal deck, and we had to either remove it or legalize it.
Okay, so how did that?
I don't think the deck itself is mentioned on the CO, but it's on the survey, I think.
Okay.
That goes in.
So what might you propose in the way of mitigation if we were to work with you with the presence of this deck as it is? And you can think about that, but.
Well, I guess, I guess it's more of a question of what, obviously, obviously, treated wood doesn't last forever. The deck would have to be replaced at some point. Obviously, that would require a trustee permit to replace it. I think the, what we're seeking is approval that the structure can be maintained in its location, knowing that when it needs to be replaced, it would be fully replaced with materials. I mean, the decking itself is composite decking, so if we're talking about a frame that's minimal as far as the materials are concerned for the construction of the deck, and it's been there for eight years, so to me, at this point, to remove that and replace it doesn't, it seems counterproductive. And, and a big disturbance to an area that is close to the bulkhead. There are, there's a significant amount of plantings along the bulkhead that we're also seeking. There's a significant amount of plantings along the bulkhead that we're also seeking to, I guess, legalize with you. The majority of those are native. If the drip lines are a problem, I'm sure that those could be removed.
Sure.
I don't see that as an issue. I'm not sure what other ways we could mitigate this. I guess we would...
My primary question is really to Mark McRedmond, and that is relation to maintaining Blue Book integrity. That's my question. You know, I understand exactly what she's saying. Just being charged with the responsibility in maintenance of Blue Book integrity on the subject of the treated material is my concern. And how the board deals with that in other cases, so that there's consistency in the policy. That's my concern. And I think that's a legal question. So, I mean, I don't know if you're prepared to answer that legal question. I know that the Board at times has had conversation relative to the various advancements in technology and process on treatments. You know, I know we got into it in a work session about whether, you know, tropical hardwoods were really the answer when you're depleting a rainforest and shipping things on a ship with a gigantic carbon footprint.
Right.
Whether that's really environmentally friendly, you know, at the end of the day. But I think that, you know, sitting in the seat that I'm in, it's important to also maintain the integrity in the policies, and that's really... Your arguments are valid arguments, and it makes common sense. I just think that, you know, and I don't know what the board's feeling is, but I just think that there's a responsibility to maintain the integrity, and I think it's a legal question.
I think it's two questions. One is definitely legal. The Blue Book obviously says no treated lumber. It's pretty clear on that. But the question is, and this is, I think, the second question, more environmental, since it's been there for eight years, if it has already all leached out and it's no longer a danger, I think that's another issue to consider as practical matter.
Right.
From a non-legal perspective, but I have no idea how long it takes to leach out.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, we have to watch this because this is something that does occur and will continue to occur, and I think that the board has to maintain integrity in the policy, and I think this is where it gets a little tricky. Okay? And that's what my concern is. And I know that there have been precedents where the board has had folks tear projects out and redo projects. So I...
It's complicated.
Yes, it is, and that's why, yeah...
Because it's Hurricane Sandy, and it's a prior owner who acted without permission.
Right.
So it's complicated.
Right.
So that's why I asked about something that could be done to mitigate this. And I'm not coming up with anything that's... I mean, especially looking at the aerial, you know, there is significant planting that has been done, and as Daphne mentioned, there is... Some of that is native species, so that's all helpful, but... I'm just looking to see what else there might be, and not trying to create an onerous situation for you, but just... It's a bit of a situation.
Well, and then there's the question of the next situation that arises, which we don't know, we're not aware of, but will, and how it compares to what we do here today. So I don't know what the other board members are thinking, but I think it's gotta be... We gotta look at this.
Well, I think the question was last time is, what's there now? You know it was treated wood when it was built, but that was eight years ago, so is there anything left of that treated wood? And I think you have to look, what's present at the time, which is right now.
Going further in the future, potential negative impacts in the environment, if there is any. That's the question. Several times on this board, when we were reviewing bulkhead replacements, the contractor has come to us and asked to have the pilings and whale as remain of a treated bulkhead, and we would allow that, just having them use new sheathing. So where does... How does this potentially...
Well, it sounds to me like it's similar to that.
Similar to that, because, yeah, I think it's similar to that.
But they had permits before to put them in.
They did, that's...
That's different.
Yeah, I got you.
So that is different.
It was permitted, but the material has already leached all the bad stuff into the environment.
Yeah, how about an Osprey hole trade?
Well, I'm more concerned about, you know, the policy in general.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and how this reflects on others.
Right, I'm more concerned about...
Yes.
This phone doesn't stop. I apologize for that. Put it on airplane mode. It's unbelievable. Yeah, because, I mean, you know, even today, I mean, I sat and read technical specifications from some of the treated lumbers today relative to this leaching issue, especially, you know, in areas like this, and it didn't seem to have the same warnings on there because it was a different process. The biggest concern was breathing in the sawdust, right?
Right.
So it's just a matter of syncing up with what our Blue Book regulations...
The material is a bioaccumulator in shellfish, being that we have certified shellfish areas and are eating the shellfish moving forward. That's why I think that was the whole contention originally.
Is it the same, though? With the same processes now, or is it...
I...
Or has it changed? Do I think the materials have changed?
No, the components have changed, and I do have Chris Gova looking into that as far as the new material that is being used. I sent him over all that information from our last meeting. But I think we should stay focused on what can be done here or what should be done here.
But wouldn't that... I understand about the shellfish, but wouldn't that be if it's physically touching the water? I mean, this is a structure that's at grade above...
It leaches into the water eventually. That was the whole philosophy, why the whole entire trustee structure, the docks, pilings, bulkhead, and actually even the lay log in the dead man system were all taken into consideration. So none of that material that was in those... In that wood would leach into the water.
The frustrating part, not the... But an additional part of the frustration relative to this is the fact that adjoining townships are not utilizing the same regulations that we are, and the water is obviously not staying within town boundaries. So, you know, there should, you know, something that is... There should be a holistic approach to that. If we're all adjoining waterways, you know, you would think that there would be, you know, there would be consistency in everybody's policy relative to that. But I don't know whether they've done, you know, further research on this bioaccumulation since the processes has changed, so I...
I have that question posed to Chris.
So we need more information on that, perhaps with future policy. Mark, what is your suggest from a legal point on this relative to...
Can I just...
Sure, absolutely.
...interject first, just because I was having a little thought. This is a significant stretch of bulkhead, so a fair amount of shoreline. What if, working perhaps with Cornell Cooperative Extension, some sub-aquatic vegetation were to be planted in front of the bulkhead? I realize it's not as significant as perhaps we wish, but it is a step, and I think that given that there is a sanctuary over on the other side of the bay, this would make a gesture at least.
I gotta think about that because you're talking about on our property mitigation versus property on, you know, versus on their property, and I think, you know, it's a good thought, but I think we gotta, you know, keep the thought.
Ours versus theirs?
Yeah, you know...
What do you mean?
No, just what I'm saying, it's like, you know, you're talking in the waterway, right?
Yeah, but right in front of his bulkhead. That's what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Just start some planting there, because that does spread, so it's just a thought.
I got you, I got you. I just say, yeah...
You know, some options here to try and balance out the damage that's already been done but wasn't under either Mr. Quatrochi or Daphne's watch. I interrupted, though, Mark. Scott, you had asked for...
Yeah, because, I mean, my concern is just, you know, from the Blue Book standpoint, you know, and how... What do you think?
Yeah, no, the Blue Book is clear on no treated lumber. Trustee Pell's point is a good one, though, that as practical matter, it has been sitting there for eight years. I don't know, do any environmental companies ever drill into and take a sample plug and see if it's still a risk to the environment, because that could be a threshold issue? I don't know if that's possible, but I suppose if it's no longer a threat to the environment at all, that's something for the trustees to consider. From a legal perspective, obviously, it's black and white, no treated lumber, but, you know, common sense is that's because of the chemicals that are or were in the wood.
What do you think?
This is a tough one. I don't want to set a negative precedent.
I know, it's a tough one.
And I also, you know, understand it's been there for eight years, and if the material is no longer, you know, present in the lumber...
But that doesn't mean it's not present in the soil or in the water that flows into the groundwater.
We could just keep right on going here.
Yeah, right.
But then you throw in the fact that the other municipalities around us are not holding the applicants to the same standards.
Right, but we only have...
Our Blue Book.
I understand, but I'm just thinking, you know, from a policy standpoint overall.
Yes, no, agreed, agreed.
You know?
So...
Is it Section 49J you're referring to? James, is that the Blue Book code, 49J?
Maybe read it.
Two different spots. Well, 49J reads that no chemically-treated lumber may be used on any construction performed with a permit issued by the Board of Trustees. Absolutely no CCA is allowed. So this isn't even... If you're reading the...
It's not CCA?
Yeah, it's not CCA.
So it says no treated wood. No chemically-treated lumber may be used on any construction performed with a permit issued by the Board of Trustees.
So what happens when it's without a permit?
There was no permit issued by the Board of Trustees. Section 77...
That's... I'd like to get an expert in here on this stuff.
We're splitting legal hairs.
Not on your end, just in general on policy.
Yeah.
I'd like to get some experts in to discuss this.
So my other issue that I have is I had originally filed an application with the Town
Conservation Board, who did process that application and sent me here first. I do have a public hearing scheduled with them next Wednesday. So first and foremost, I need to go to them next week with some kind of input as confirming that this board has decided to take full jurisdiction over the whole structure.
Technically, that would be what we would do, the way it's attached to the bulkhead and everything that's landward, that I would say yes.
And I would concur with Trustee Warner.
Historically, that's the way it's been done.
So whether or not you make a decision as to whether or not to legalize it as is, I would like to request if I could have some form of memo or something that I could go to them next week so I can potentially close out that hearing.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
To say that you have decided...
Right.
That you will take full jurisdiction of the project.
Which I believe is the right thing for us to do.
Correct.
Okay.
I concur.
Thank you.
If you interface with Lisa on that, I think, because Jessica's not in this week.
Okay.
Where are you going? Planning what?
Conservation.
Conservation.
I think this is a conversation that we should have with the attorney and the executive session.
Yeah, we're gonna...
I would, you know, I don't...
We'll give you that letter, and then we're gonna continue on with our deliberation.
Yes.
I mean, we're obviously open to ideas for mitigation, but it seems removal of the structure just seems like...
It's the last thing that you're looking at.
Yeah.
I get it.
Let us have a conversation amongst ourselves and see if we can come up with some kind of plan moving forward.
We'll take the jurisdiction side of it, though, so we'll resolve that part. Agreed.
Okay. Appreciate that.
All right.
All right, thank you. Yeah, as soon as I can.
Thank you. Okay, so then we will wait to hear...
Reconvene.
...from you on next steps.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have another one here yet. No, I have...
Land use.
Land use. I have 35 Walker.
Land use is here, huh?
Yeah, so I have yours. You're up now.
Okay, thank you.
Explain your 35 Walker project.
This is for La Can, Walker Avenue.
Yes, La Can, Family Trust. 35 Walker Avenue.
This project is a reconstruction of a bulkhead in place of landward of the existing. It's 219 linear feet total. There is a return at the south end of the site, which is going to be reconstructed to be along the property line. Currently, it's outside the property line, so we're gonna have that reconstructed to be inside the property line. And also...
Are you gonna go straight? Are you going to go in the...
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna go in... Are you going square?
Yes, along the property line.
You talking about the middle part?
The middle part, yeah. I just saw the... Oh, I'm sorry, yes. In the middle part, I didn't get there. In the middle part, there's existing cutout for stairs. It's like a trapezoid.
Right.
And they're gonna square that off, and they're gonna put removable stairs at the one side. And that's, you know, 14 feet in the sides and 35 feet across, new bulkhead. Cut into the property in the corners to make it square.
And 25 cubic yards of fill?
It's gonna be removed.
Move 25.
That's gonna... The fill's gonna be removed to square it off, and they're gonna use that on the site behind the bulkhead.
Can you go overhead shop for this, please?
10-foot turf.
Yeah, right now, it's a cutout. There's stairs, and I guess it's kind of the weird angle of the existing bulkheads that are there. And originally, when we first admitted the plans, we were gonna propose to go straight across, and then we started getting some objections from the DEC and the Army Corps and Engineers because we're filling in wetlands.
Right.
Which is okay. So we modified the plans to what we now have proposed to square it off and cut out some area. And that fill's gonna be used landward of the existing bulkhead to fill in low spots and to be graded in.
Do you have the access steps to the bay are gonna be in that cutout?
Yeah, it's gonna be access stairs on the south end. They wanna make them retractable so that if they're not in use or if a storm comes, they can just take them out.
I agree with that.
You have your DEC permits now?
DEC, well, I have the Army Corps, and I don't have DEC yet.
You have Army Corps?
Um...
Just wondering who's already applying on this.
Let me triple check. Is this wet most of the time? I just have the Department of State, Army Corps.
Well, Todd, you can have, you know, a walkover beach.
Yeah.
That's why I asked where the stairs were gonna be. They could tuck them in the indented bulkhead area, not to impede...
Which is what he's got.
Not to impede with the...
Access, have some repairs.
He's got a buffer on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the stairs are tucked in in the back corner.
Yep.
You can see where the existing open area is on the plans.
Yes. Yes. And at the north end, there's a little lower platform area, I guess, that they used previously for, I don't know what for, but they're gonna remove that and make it level. And it's existing 12-foot return is gonna... A new 12-foot return is proposed at that end. And then we have the 10-foot buffer landward of the bulkhead.
Beach grass.
Yes.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. You good?
Especially in this location.
You good, Eddie?
Yeah.
Bill?
I'm fine.
William?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. So we're advanced now. So we're advanced now. Okay, so I think we got Trustee Pell, you're up.
Here's Michael DiSofano, thirty-six Old Fort Lane. Come on up, Mike.
Good morning.
Have a seat, sign in. We had some questions about your project before. Whether you came today.
Did I check on my address as well?
If you want to.
Okay.
Describe your project to us.
I just, I wanna put a dock in.
Put a dock in?
I bought the house finally after many, many years on the water. I'm a big fisherman, I love the water, and my intentions always was to put a dock in, and that's on here.
The property is located on thirty-six Old Fort Lane.
Correct.
And he wants to construct a four-by-thirty-five fixed dock with sixty percent open grating deck and install a thirty-foot, eleven-foot ramp seaward of the fixed dock. Install a six-by-twenty floating wood dock seaward at the end of the new ramp supported by chocks between the piles to prevent the bottom floating from dropping lower than two foot, thirty inches of water, above grade at mean low water. Install four six-inch round and treaty topical piles for support float.
Billy, is this the project that we discussed?
Yes.
And the, where there was a dredged...
Yes.
The channel inshore of the proposed dock or where the proposed dock was in offshore was very, very shallow.
Yes.
So basically, he would require the water depth closer to the bulkhead, but the...
There's no water, you can have water, blue book says you need thirty inches of water for a float.
So it would be compliant for that?
Yeah, but does it say that you need water, deep water going to the hole where it's sitting in, that's the trouble?
So right now, what's the depth of the water underneath the dock?
On the inside of the dock, it's two-foot five.
So it would be compliant, this would be compliant per blue book?
It's just a matter of outside that, you know, it changes quickly to one foot.
Yeah, no...
Seaward.
Yeah.
In the middle of the channel or whatever channels there.
The way to navigate that is you have to hug the...
The shoreline.
Shoreline, and then, it's only about two-hundred feet before the channel, and then you make a left and you're out, you're good. I mean, it's deep water, very close.
Yeah.
You just have to be mindful, and you know, obviously, you can't have a huge boat, have to have a shallow hull.
If we put you right in the middle of that channel, then you block the boats coming from the east.
I mean, I can adjust it back, I mean, there's a dock that was issued a permit last year around this time, my next-door neighbor.
Yeah.
And...
It's a similar situation.
Exactly the same.
Yeah.
It's, it's, he's here, I'm here.
I mean, it's not a designated navigation channel, so, you know, Billy, we're not, you know, it's, you know, it's not a mark, so I mean...
It's a old channel.
The application, as it is right now, it's, it's, it's approvable per our blue book.
Yes. Are you guys fine with it?
I'm, I'm good with it.
And you good with it?
Yeah.
I really can't deny it because he's got all... That's what I said, he's got everything together.
Like I said, it's gonna be a reasonably sized boat, you're not gonna put a big boat.
Yeah. You just wanna fish in the backwaters.
Yeah, so it'd be perfect for that, backwater fishing boat, yeah.
How far is it to the west to get to the channel?
About two-hundred feet.
James, can you draw back just a bit? Please? So, okay.
Right at the end of that property, make a left. I've been in and out of there hundreds of times.
Over history, there was a lot of dredging that went on to fill the wetlands in.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, this area is changing, and maybe, I don't know, if the neighbors would wanna have it eventually dredged again, because there are docks all the way to the end of the road.
Oh, I know, I'm very familiar with the area.
Fish seem to like it.
Yeah.
On the incoming tide.
Yeah, all right, I'm, I'm good with it.
Putting that out on the airwaves, everybody will be there now.
How much, when you're going to the water in mind, how much can you draw, like at low tide?
Well, at low tide, I mean...
And then let to Old Fort Pond, like all the way out?
All the way to the end, I don't, I've never gone down to the end. But I'm assuming, again, as long as you hug the shoreline, you're good. It gets shallower towards Indian Reservation, because there's a sandbar there.
Yep.
But otherwise, you know, if you're mindful of the tides, you just go nice and easy in and out.
That's the way you navigate it.
I mean, it's not uncommon, that whole area is like that.
Yep.
You just, I mean, you need a hull that drafts less than a foot.
That's perfect.
And you're good.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right.
One thing I wanna change on is the chalk, jocks for the, you're gonna have them on the pole, we'd rather have pole board going across from one pole to another pole.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not a dock expert, but I believe the intention is that it never hits the bottom.
Correct.
But what we're saying is...
Oh, okay.
Like a four-by-six from pole to pole, so it actually cradles it on each end.
So here's the pole. Have the board going straight across, have it bolted.
Oh, okay.
So it sits on here.
Got it.
That way, because usually, if the pole's bent, the jocks are out of line.
Got it.
Then you'd be sitting, okay, still on a good hook.
Okay, that's doable.
Just gotta change that on the, on the plans.
Okay.
Then we go forward.
Would you mind just, wanna just draw it right on there, so I have it. Brought this too for you.
Nice.
I'm not too good with the drawer.
They seem to like the plugs.
That's great.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your help, and...
Just, just award that to Lisa or Jessica.
Okay. Yeah, just, okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
All right, you ready for your next one, Bill? For Southampton Town?
Our next one is Southampton Village. Nelson Pope, just gonna explain everything. Tony's here, too.
Good morning, everyone.
How you doing?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I just went to get the board note, Tony's daughter works for us. I'm fine with it. Are we all fine with it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Bring it out.
That's okay.
Very good employee by the way.
We're gonna keep her.
We're gonna keep her. Shall I proceed, Bill?
Yes, go ahead, you got the floor.
Very good. For the record, it's Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope Voorhees with offices in Belleville. And we submitted an application on March twenty-fourth, so we really appreciate the prompt response. We believe the application was complete, there are plans, all the forms, fees, figures, photos of the site.
Excuse me, by the way, we're gonna waive the fees.
Oh, I had heard that, that's wonderful, and the mayor thanks you as well. He was the one that told me. This is truly a partnership project, it's a green infrastructure project. It was originally conceived by the Lake Agawam Conservancy, which is a group that has formed for protection of Lake Agawam. Tony's firm was engaged from a landscape horticultural standpoint. Patrick Conlin helped with some of the planting scheme. Tony can talk about the plan more as we get into it. And NPV drafted the plan and came up with the quantities and the nitrogen load reductions and other nutrient reductions based on the watershed treatment model. The land is owned by the village, the village fully supports the project, the community fully supports the project, as does Lake Agawam Conservancy. The trustees have been involved with the DEC HABs Action Plan, and I've met Bill at a number of the meetings, we participated on behalf of the village, so cleaning up Lake Agawam is obviously a priority for all levels of government as well as the community. And as I said, the trustees have been part of that as well as the DEC, so it really is a partnership. There's a bio-swell proposed at the end of Linden Lane, we're looking to remove pavement, appointed a rain guardian to remove solids from the stream of flow. We calculated a watershed of about twelve thousand square feet, and we're providing kind of a circuitous swell through plantings.
Where do you want? This part?
Yeah, maybe the left side there.
You have photos of the current?
Yeah, there's extensive photos in the file, the cover letter for March twenty-fourth.
You have photos, too?
Yeah, I can only pull one thing up, so if you...
Yeah, that's the plan of it, that's the action plan.
So you're going to be removing the... And draw the road.
At the very end of the view, right?
That was never part of the original plan, I'm honestly a little unaware of that, but I can see where there's...
Yeah, I think there's a small area down here. And the part that's within trustees' jurisdiction would be the waterfront area, so we're looking to remove the phragmides rhizomes, replant that area with the forest species per the plan, and also put in root barrier to prevent phragmides from coming in from each side. And a lot of the homeowners along Lake Agawam are doing improvements and removing phragmides, also expanding buffers.
That's good, expanding buffers is good.
Could you talk a little bit about removal of the rhizomes and the barrier that you spoke of?
Sure, sure. There'd be a small piece of equipment, probably some type of small excavator.
Yep.
That would come in and basically just scoop out the soil down to the depth of the rhizomes. Root barriers would be dug in on each side of Linden Lane, and that would, in theory, prevent phragmides from coming in and having those root rhizomes extend back within the replanted buffer area. So we do see it as a green infrastructure project. I saw from the photograph before that there is quite a bit of green space at the end of existing Linden Lane, so I can check, but there may not be any removal of pavement. But this essentially completes the right-of-way, takes the stormwater that would otherwise travel down Linden Lane and into Lake Agawam and routes it through to contain the first flush and treat that first flush. And the plantings that are designed within the rain garden and bio swales are deep-rooted plants that are gonna help retain those nutrients and basically filter out the pollutants.
Do your root barriers have to go?
Usually thirty inches is sufficient.
Like all plastic material, forty mill?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a vertical plastic sheet.
Sixty mil?
Sixty mil.
But what you would use for bamboo barrier?
Right.
Same thing?
That's what I was thinking, probably use a bamboo barrier.
We have a detail on it, it's two feet minimum.
It has been, from my, from my perspective, it's been very effective.
Yeah, the rhizomes spread horizontally, so it essentially prevents them from going past that barrier.
I've used a lot of that bamboo barrier, I have a lot of experience with dealing with invasive bamboo, and it works very, very well.
Yes.
So with phragmides?
Yes.
I think it will, I think the bamboo may be...
Same principle.
More aggressive. Aggressive, I think the bamboo's even more aggressive. That's why I was asking, like, the thickness, because some of that invasive bamboo, really bad, will wreck a lot of...
Absolutely will, takes over everything.
Yeah, it's got a lot of...
And it gets huge.
Gets huge, and you cut it down, and if you run a tractor over the top of it, you'll puncture your tires, so.
Yes, true.
You gotta really, you know, if it works for bamboo, it'll work for this for sure.
So in place of that phragmides, we're planting taifa, which is cattail, which, from what I understand, before my time, is historically the plant that did bring all the waterways around here.
Does that come to coming like baby stalks or seed?
Pots.
Pots?
Yeah. It's, it has a rhizome system equal to that of phragmides, it just isn't as, it can't compete with the phragmides, so we're hoping that it's sort of a seed bank as well, as, as that stand establishes itself and starts spreading some seed, that there might be a chance to get some pockets of it reintroduced.
And we're proposing four-quart containers, twelve inches on center of the type.
Also wanna point out, see, if you zoom in on that picture, you won't have that drain going into...
It's a pipe.
You won't see that pipe anymore.
No, we're, we're doing the, we're reversing what that pipe does. We're cleaning the water before it hits the lake.
Show that people that, that's what you're solving the problem.
Yeah.
Cleaning the water before it goes in there.
You know, I also wanna expand on what Chick said about this being a public-private partnership. This entire project is funded by public donations, so, and, and a lot of the people involved with it are doing things at reduced costs, as you guys are sort of chipping in your fees. And it's, it's a very small sliver of what needs to be done around Lake Agawam.
Need a lot of small projects.
Yeah, and that's what we're hoping, that this might be more a public awareness issue.
It's a demo site of sorts.
Pardon me?
It's a demo site.
Well, Tony, actually, you worked on the trustees' parking lot.
Yes, yeah.
We're trying to do something, upgrade that again.
Same thing, public awareness, just we'll start asking questions about water quality.
Now we're trying to redo the middle part.
That would be great.
I have a meeting with the mayor at one o'clock today, and we're actively pursuing a number of grants for other projects on Lake Agawam, so there's really a lot in the works, the group that Tony's working with.
We gotta pursue some grants, too.
Yeah. On your, if you, once you get all your permits, what's your timeframe to stop this project?
Should be this spring, we're waiting for DEC, but we're, we're looking to accelerate that. We'd look for your support, we'll certainly communicate that.
He has a, able to DEC.
I'd like to, from a, from a construction standpoint, I'd love to get this done before Memorial Day, just because then it becomes difficult.
Yeah.
And, you know, I should bring up that there is a little bit of public opposition to this, the neighbor to the south.
You should put the picture up.
Here.
On what grounds?
I have no idea.
They don't understand.
It's gonna be a beautiful planted area.
Mainly that the deer are gonna eat, you know, he said that the deer are gonna eat everything because he's gardened there for years, but if you look at the plant list, it's eighty percent grass.
So the concern is the deer eating everything.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
Or the people walking down the sea.
Or public...
Or public access.
Access.
Feel like enjoyment?
Deer.
Yeah.
Deer's...
There's a bench there now, I'm pretty sure. I have a bench there?
Can't see much of it. Phragmides there now. It's an overall improvement.
What did DEC say about removing the phragmides, about digging them out?
I haven't heard anything from them.
They should be okay with that, it's a small amount, it's a very small area.
Yes, yes, understood, but...
And really, the only effective way where you can plant it right away is to remove the rhizomes. Otherwise, it's repeated cutting for at least three years.
That's what I was gonna say, that's what we've heard, is repeated cutting, so this would be a change on their part to allow the complete excavation.
Yeah, no, I have seen them approve.
Other projects would be this. Yeah, excavated out.
You put waiters on it.
It speeds up the process for three years, basically.
But we are, we don't...
I mean, we've had people come to us where they wanted to put Roundup and Wick each one, and Roundup goes into, you know, that's not a good thing either.
There's a gentleman here before showing us a picture of a big strike bass, said he caught on a plug by his property. And I remember when I was involved in bamboo rhizome remediation, I was holding up these things like it was a trophy fish, but I just ripped out of the ground, you know? but I just ripped out of the ground, you know?
If the D E C insists on cutting, I'm fine with that. We, I do a lot of that through my professional work.
So if you can't, you would wait three years before you put the pots back in?
Yeah, I don't think you'd plant it right away.
No, we wouldn't plant it right away. We would do everything landward.
You have to wait.
And just make it an ongoing.
Just makes the process a lot longer.
Yeah.
You're, you're getting to the solution right away. And the other way, you're gonna get it doing like three or four years. You know, three years of cutting, and then you'll re-vedge after the third year. So that really, you know, puts it off quite a while.
It's such a small area. We thought it would be a good experimental plot to see if it makes sense.
Do you have other examples of places where you've done that, where you've removed them, that you can give to them to support this?
I, I don't.
Yes, I do.
You do? Good.
In Southampton?
More, a couple in Nassau County and a couple in, I think it's, it's a talk at Harvard.
Okay.
Actually close to the D E C office, so they're familiar with it.
Their new office.
I can call Sarah Davison, because there's a big one on Georgia Capone where somebody did physical removal and then re-vedge about six years ago.
Already.
Yeah.
They've already, yeah.
I don't expect an issue with it, but, again, we can always modify.
Are we, are we all good with it? And you're good with it?
We're good with it. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be, as I said, speaking to the mayor this afternoon, so that's great news.
Tell unanimous support for it.
Yes, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down.
Post on next project down at the parking lot.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a huge improvement.
Yes.
Get that going.
Good deal. All right, thanks for your time. Great to see you.
All right. We have an application here for 43 Canoe Place Road, Hampton Bays, the old Bradley's Fishing Station. There's a dock presently there which services a restaurant on Canoe Place Road. The pilot, the dock was built back in the 80s. The pilings have been basically eaten away by some of the bugs that eat the treated lumber that we have in the environment, even though it was supposed to last for a long time. It doesn't, so they're looking to replace four pilings on the dock. It's a pretty simple, you know, replacement.
Sounds like it has to be done.
So.
Yeah. He does good upkeep on his property.
Yeah, I believe the contract has already been brought in to do that. And I'm gonna also ask him during one of the winters about 10 years ago, the pilings on both sides of the dock where the tire pilings were raised up about 10 feet. I'm gonna ask him to knock them down so everything is, you know, consistently height.
So he's gonna use greenheart?
He's gonna use tropical wood, yes. Yep. So I'd like to move that ahead.
I'm fine with that.
Advance.
James, the next one is modification permit number GP 0002935 Windmill Circle. It's basically housekeeping. The original plans were submitted with treated lumber referenced in the project. I asked them to put, send us new plans with no treated lumber reference, which they have. They already have a permit for the project, so I'd like to just, you know, clarify that, all right?
Perfect.
Okay? We're good.
Trustee Parish?
The first one that's on is 41 Huntington Lane. We received an email from Clay Cofield asking to put it over for the next meeting.
Put it on hold.
So we'll put that on hold. And the next one is 62 Dune Road. Is there anyone here from N Consultants?
Want to discuss this, or you want to put it on hold?
Put it on hold. Had some questions.
Okay. Put that on hold.
And then we have 5 Club Court. That's on hold.
Hold.
And then last but not least, we have 34 South Bay Avenue in Eastport. Land use ecological.
Yes, Ed?
How are you?
Good, how are you doing? This proposed project is essentially the reconstruction in place of an existing dock facility. The catwalk is proposed to be constructed of open great material now, opposed to timber. There's no treated materials proposed. There's an existing, the existing catwalk's four foot by 140. The ramp is going to be the same at three foot by 10 foot. And the float's gonna be placed in the same place. It's a six by 20 foot float. And appears to be plenty of water there. At the seaward end of the float, it's about two and a half. It says 2.8 feet on the plan.
Then you had some pilings?
Yes, there's two, two pilings on the plans to support the float. Eight inch diameter.
It seems, is, James, we talked about this one, didn't we? Seems to be Blue Book compliant and. Anyone have any questions?
Blue Book compliant?
I'm good.
We're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Okay, so that, I think, wraps up with the exception of the waterfall hunting license permit applications.
Forgive me, General. I thought I saw 35 there as the address. Is it 34 South Bay Avenue or 35? I'm just trying to get the right address.
34.
South Bay Avenue.
You saw 35 somewhere, Mark?
Okay, I thought I saw 35 on the visual.
We'll, we'll make sure we don't have a, yeah. We'll make sure we don't have some type of a.
They have the adjacent address.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that's.
Thank you.
We still have to deal with the waterfall.
Yeah, it's 34.
Okay. It's got 34?
Yep.
You good, Mark?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Come on up, Linnea.
Okay. Good morning.
Hello, Linnea, how are you this morning?
Good, how are you guys doing?
We're good.
I'm just gonna grab my bucket. Do you mind if I put it on the table?
Not at all.
Okay.
Don't forget to sign it.
Oh, I won't.
Stay with me.
This is very tough.
Okay, hold on one second. All right, so to start off with our waterfall, waterfall NOVs, we have Kevin Mott. He is blind number 75. And he actually did respond with, to his NOV. It is his first NOV, actually, for his blind, for him being the permit holder. And the failure was, it was the failure to call for inspection. And he did reply with an email, I believe, and photos. It was kind of I forgot to call in situation.
And it was his first time?
Yes, his first time.
So the blind was hunted as per our regulations, so it would qualify for, basically allowing him to continue hunting. So you okay? Okay, okay.
Okay with it.
Advance.
All right. Next up, we have Matthew Peterson and Kenneth Rayner. Sorry, I read those out of the work. Um, pardon me. So for the co-permittees, it's blind number 47. Matthew Peterson, this is his first NOV. It was actually issued in error by the Bay Constables. They were meant, meaning to issue it to another blind, but accidentally issued it to Matthew Peterson. So that's for his explanation.
Advance this.
Kenneth Rayner, he did just have a previous NOV in 2018, failure to have the blind in place, grassed, and ready to hunt by December 31st. But that's the only prior for this.
Yeah, but it wasn't even a qualifying NOV, basically.
No.
So.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
What happens in this situation?
Just advance it. We'll just reinstate it.
Okay, so next is Shane Carter. This is his first NOV. It was failure to call for inspection, failure to have blind in place, grassed by December 31st. There was a comment that says blind dialect, no grass.
Dialect, yeah.
Thank you. And he did not respond to his NOV.
And what was it? Did it, was it overhand hunted, hunted?
Not that I believe so. Let me.
No, it sounds like it's just a derelict blind.
Nope, there was no, and there was no correspondence received. Same position it has been for the entire 21 and 20, 22 hunting seasons.
So he hasn't?
I guess he's not that interested in.
You want me to call him, just to make sure?
Yes.
I'll make a final call. I'm gonna make a call. I will, I'll, I'll reach out as the trustee for the area.
It sounds like he's had no hunt.
Something's here and there before. Yeah, that's what, yeah. Yeah, let me make a phone call since it's work session.
He was pretty big at one time.
Right, let me make a phone call.
Okay.
So indicate trustee Horowitz will reach out to permit holder number 46.
If he doesn't want it, I'll go back to the list.
Correct.
Okay. So up next, we have Joseph Kirby. He's permit holder 164. This is his first NOV. It was failure to call for inspection, failure to have blind grassed and ready to hunt by December 31st. Now, da, 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 da. There's a very lengthy explanation from Richard Franks about the situation that happened. If you'd like me to read it out to you, I have no problem.
It should be in the minutes.
Okay. It should be in the minutes.
Oh, it'll be.
Oh, okay. So.
You want to pull it up?
Are you gonna read it?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just reading it myself. I apologize. Okay, so the NOV was issued for failure to call for inspection as well as failure to have in place and grassed and ready to hunt prior to December 31st during the 2021, 2022 waterfall season. Richard Franks states that he received a call from Dan McKay, who assists Mr. Kirby with the location during the month of December, approximately the week before Christmas, stating that someone stole their blind. Upon further investigation by the Bay Constables utilizing a drone, we located the blind and notified Mr. McKay that at the time I spoke to him and advised him once the blind was, is back, it is on permitted, on its permitted location and grassed ready to hunt. He should let us know and that he would be good to go. So they never received any additional phone calls from Mr. McKay or Mr. Kirby. After the holidays, they conducted another round of inspections along, along with the Waterfall Hunting Enforcement. Through the township, notice that blind 164 was still in the same condition as it was prior to December 31st deadline. At this time, we took another photo, and the NOV was issued after the 2021, 2022 season was completed. Richard Franks also said that photos from the drone have been sent to the trustees' staff via email for you guys to review.
Trustee Welker?
I'm happy to reach out and see what the situation was. This blind was hunted last year, though, correct? This is the first year this is?
Yes, this is the first NOV.
You're gonna reach out?
Yes.
Okay. So pending report from trustee Welker. Okay.
All right. Next, we have Sean Brudowski. Excuse me if I totally swallowed that. He is permit holder 166. So this is also his first NOV. Failure to call for inspection, and he failed to grass and have it ready by December 31st of 2021. Also, it was stated that the old grass from last year was still on his blind. But he did respond, and he said that he had been, he forgot to call in. He hunted it the whole season. That's what happened. That's what we got from Rich.
So he called in, he didn't do a written?
He didn't, he said he forgot to call in. Along with some of the other permit holders.
His explanation was a call not written? Or did he write?
Failure to call for visual inspection, failure to grass and have ready by December 31st, old grass from last year.
So we have no written commentary from him at all?
No.
What trustee Welker, I think, is asking.
Oh, from the permit holder themselves.
A letter?
Nope, they all have submitted dated photos and a letter stating they were not in compliance, why they were not in compliance, so why they didn't call in. But they did hunt their blind the whole time.
And we, they, they say they did.
Yes. I have a letter from them here.
So they did send a letter?
They did send a letter.
Yeah.
That's what you were looking for.
Oh, sorry, I was, got a little confused there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you do have a letter saying that they did and.
Okay, and this was their first violation?
Yes, their first NOV.
And they subsequently addressed it?
I believe so.
And now they understand the process?
Is there a Bay Constable recommendation on this?
Not that I can see or, it's just what I have from Richard's email. He's in the group of people that did reply to their NOV. That's the incentive I know to which Richard said of it.
Should I reach out to the Bay Constable and see what the recommendation is?
Well, it's, it's our decision.
I think that it's been addressed and that he replied.
Okay.
In writing, so I think we're okay with that.
And we're okay?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. Next, we have Andrew Duran. He is blind spot holder number three. This is his first NOV as well. It was listed as he failed to call for his inspection. It was a floating blind and shore blind or duck boat. Those are the comments I have from Richard. He did send in photos and a letter explaining as to why he was, why he forgot to call in. But he did provide proof that he did hunt and maintain the blind through the season, so.
Trustee Parish?
What are the, this is my first one here. What is, what are the choices here?
Well, either we revoke it or we, we accept the, we accept the excuse and we grant some leniency and we allow them to keep their position.
You can give them the pass.
We give them some benefit of the doubt unless it's completely.
But he did hunt it, and so.
Yeah.
You know.
He had a new baby, too, during.
So sometimes a phone call.
Right.
And a little bit of explanation is, or a little bit of discussion is.
Right. Before we take their blind away from them. We're trying to properly run a very complex duck blind program. You know, keep it all straight. It requires cooperation by the folks that enjoy the resource so that it's managed nicely, so everybody's got to work together. So we give them the benefit of the doubt, but once it becomes, you know, like, you clearly.
If he has, if he has a history.
Repeated violations.
Yeah, and you know how it is with new babies.
I forgot.
Because, no, most people realize to have a duck blind is a privilege. We're all allowed to go hunting in the town for the freeholders, but to have a duck blind is a privilege. And you don't take that lightly.
All right.
Most duck holders, most permit holders are very, take care of their blinds very well.
So how do we proceed as far as, is this a slap on the wrist?
He did reply and state that he does have photos stating he did maintain it and hunted throughout the season.
Right, so I think he's learned, you know...
It's made an effort?
Yeah.
I think, Bill, I think you're asking how, what the age and deed.
Oh, okay.
How to go forward with that, whether it gets advanced or held or denied.
Yeah. So what we do, once...
What do we do now? Do we just...
We're going to advance it?
I would advance it.
Or reinstatement?
So then we'll let him know.
Our general means so that we can reinstate him.
Right.
Yes.
Advancement, just...
To reinstate.
Reinstate.
Yes. At all meeting, we'll reinstate him.
Okay.
Give him another chance.
All right. Fair enough.
A lot of times, it's educational process with people. You know, you could have a conversation with people and explain to them why we need them.
Educating me also right now.
There you go. Educational process.
You know, the threat is that they...
Communication.
The threat is that they're going to lose their blind.
And they will, because somebody will take it in five minutes.
It's a very extent, a long, long waitlist for waterfall spots.
Yes.
Waterfall spots.
And they watch.
Yeah, it's a pretty long, very long.
Watch other waterfalls.
They're on top of their game. They're watching.
Yes.
Move on to the next.
Okay, so next, we have Peter Marks. He's permit holder number 13. This is his first NOV. It was failure to call for inspection. He also did reply with photos and an email to a letter stating why he was late. So he says, please see attached photographs as requested taken on one such hunting day, specifically November 20th of 2021. A regrettable oversight on my behalf resulted in failing to schedule an inspection of my duck boat. Here are the photos you guys would like to see. Sorry for not showing the other ones. Just showing that he maintained it.
Yep.
That he was hunting it. Know that there's...
One thing about duck boats, they take them home at night, so it's plus headaches. There's a storm.
Yeah, should we just advance that as well?
Yeah, I would if I was you. But it's up to you.
No, let's advance it. First time.
Okay, next up, we have Wesley Bennett for his first one. Permit number 14.
14 and 15.
Yes, he's 14, 15. For this permit spot, this is his first NOV. It was failure to call for inspection. In Richard Franks' email, he does state that no blinds were in either location, never hunted these locations during the 2021-2022 hunting season. They issued an NOV returnable by February 28th of 2022, and they have still not received any correspondence from Wesley Bennett to support as to why he didn't call to get an inspection.
Uh-huh.
Hey, Ed, is that nephew?
I don't know. I'm, I don't know.
The first name doesn't sound familiar, but I know that those blinds got divided between all the family.
Yeah, but it sounds like they had no interest of hunting them either year.
They weren't even in their spots at all.
They weren't, so they weren't.
Both 15 and 14.
Was he given an NOV last year also?
No. This is his first NOV for 2020. This is his only one.
So he didn't get one?
When did he acquire these blinds? Is this his first year with these?
No, it sounds like he's had them for a couple.
Couple of years. Maybe three years. What do you think, Ed?
I have a letter here from 2018, February 15th. It was handwritten. Jessica Glucksky actually notarized it from Wesley Bennett. It says, I am currently the co-owner of Rich's Bay Blind Spots, 14 and 15, and my grandfather, Bill Bennett, is the owner. Bill has passed away, so I'm requesting the spots be transferred into my name as a primary owner. So before, it was Wesley. He was a co-perity with William Bennett and himself.
Sounds like he doesn't have the same drive or interest for the...
Sometimes still a phone call.
Yeah, I think maybe trustee Parish will make a phone call.
Yeah.
Okay? Let's make a phone call before we make a final determination on this.
Would that be the same for both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. A couple of phone calls are going to be made out.
Sounds like there isn't even a blind.
We should talk about the 15.
No, he said that in the email, there was one placed.
Could bring the other one up, so...
It's on, it's on.
Okay.
It's just north of the 14.
Okay.
So it's directly past the dock?
Yeah.
Would you guys like me to present number 15, or should I move on to...
I would present it just in case.
Sure, okay. So Wesley Bennett, number, blind spot holder number 15. This is his first NOV for 2022. It was failure to call for inspection. He has not sent in any correspondence to the Bay Constables about why he did not have his blind in the water. Once again, to state, no blinds in either location, never hunted these locations during the 2021-2022 hunting season. They issued the NOV returnable by February 28th of 2022, and they have still not received any correspondence from Mr. Wesley Bennett.
Same response, so I'll give them a call on both of those.
Okay.
Okay, finally, we have Christopher J. Ott. He is permit holder number 24. Now, Mr. Ott has had three NOVs. So his first one was in 2018, which was failure to submit hunting license, duck stamp, and affidavit, failure to call for inspection of duck boat location. His NOV in 2021 was failure to call for inspection, and his NOV for 2022 is failure to call for inspection. He did reply to the Bay Constables with photos and a very detailed email. I can read his email out for you if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. Hi, Jessica. I was just going through mail from earlier this month, and I realized that I received a waterfall violation for failure to, for visual inspection from the constables. I did hunt twice this season, and I did call the constables both times. I'm fairly certain I left messages both times as well. I have provided some pictures to help show my efforts. I hope this is adequate, as I would really like to keep the spot. I had an issue with this last season as well, and I recall you mentioning that I could email them. What is the best email for that? I tried looking at the one, at the one night, as it was last-minute hunt, but I could not find an email link for complaints. I am permit holder 24, duck boat. Here's pictures of him from hunting with his game. These are screenshots of the phone calls to the Bay Constables.
Are the dates on there?
What'd you say?
Are the dates where?
The dates actually are not on here. It just says today.
I mean, the Bay Constables would have record of it.
Yeah.
Yes, they would. Another picture of him using the spot.
But he has time to go hunting, but he has not time to do these three things three years in a row.
Right.
So one strike, two strikes, three strikes.
Yeah, normally, you're...
You're out.
This is your, this is your area?
This is your area.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a call to Richie. If there's, there's phone calls there that he made the effort to, you know, contact them.
Right.
We have some phone call, you have some phone calls and discussions.
Yeah, I mean...
And call Rich.
Rich and...
There's just unfortunately no dates on here.
We're going to have to get...
But he did call.
There is a recording system. I'm assuming that they're not going to erase these.
Messages.
Yeah.
He said in his email to the, to Jessica that he doesn't recall if he did leave them voice messages or not.
Well, that's, yeah, that's... We're going to have to have a conversation with him.
But it's sort of trouble with a person like this. We're going to be there again next year.
Same, same. Right, the same scenario over...
Because you get it, there's a point where how many, you know, he's a nice guy and all that, and he likes to hunt, but he also, there's also this 80 people who would have that spot.
Right.
Who are going to not do this, waste your time, waste our time. And this is what we're trying to get away from.
Right.
There's respect for the program.
There's respect. And, you know, if, you know, one time, two times, or three times, my book, you don't care about the program.
Yeah. Well, trustee Parish, you're going to have to have a stern conversation with somebody or make this...
I'm going to call Rich, and I'll call up this Christopher Ott as well. I'll get some information on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
See what the scoop is.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Now, we have an executive session, right?
One more thing.
You got one more thing?
One more thing I can talk about.
All right, you do.
We all, like, throw our spray nest, and I put it on Facebook a while ago, looking for a post, locust post, instead of using, you know, man-made post or straight post, something that has a little character to it. And I got a lot of response. And we had a farmer up in Riverhead, who had a bunch of locust poles on the edge of his property. And we went up there and found seven trees. I went up there with Rich Franks, and we found seven trees, and we called Dom Tree Service, who has a contract with the town for tree service. And he gave us an estimate of $3,660 to cut them down, $250 to bring them. That would bring the total cost for each pole roughly $515.
So the farmer wants to donate the trees?
Yeah, the farmer's going to donate the trees.
We have to cut them and get them here.